Forum for the School Board of the Northfield School District. I'm Sarah Entonman. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters Board, and we're delighted that you could all make it. We thank you for coming and being in the audience, and this is going to be an informative and helpful discussion. Our mission, the mission of the League of Women Voters, is that we're a nonpartisan political organization. We encourage informed and active participation in government. We work to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and we influence public policy through education and advocacy. I'd like to very much thank our St. Olaf Student Timekeepers. Thank you for getting up so early on a Saturday morning. And a big, big round of applause goes to our Voter Education Committee chaired by Jean Agee and Teri Steed. This forum is being streamed and will be available on our website, which is LWVNorthfieldMN.org. We'll be taking questions from the audience via written note cards. If you didn't grab one and you have a question or might have a question, we have cards and pencils right here. Another thing we have are Vote Today signs, and these are available for you to take home. Please take a sign and talk to Bonnie Jean Flom about directions for its use. Now, I'd like to introduce our able and wonderful moderator, Bree Mackey, from Winona.
Good morning, everyone. Again, my name is Bree Mackey, and I'll be your moderator for today's forums. I am a member of the Winona Unit down in southeast Minnesota, so a little bit of a drive this morning. Your forum sponsor today is the League of Women Voters of Northfield and Cannon Falls. We are pleased to welcome all of you who are here in our live audience, and also those citizens who might be streaming at home the event. We want to thank the city of Northfield for allowing us to hold the forum today in their city council chambers. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization comprised of local, state, and federal levels. It is there to encourage citizens to participate in government. While the League does take studies on positions, on issues, we do not endorse or support political parties and candidates, or tell voters how to answer the referendum questions. This forum is intended to provide people with information so that they can make forum decisions on the ballot. The views expressed at this forum are those of the candidates. I would like to thank our timekeepers this morning and early in the afternoon. They are students from the St. Olaf College, and they're enrolled in Government Conversations class. We are grateful for their participation in this event. I'm going to go over just a few of the ground rules today. The audience is expected to be courteous to the candidates. This is a live broadcast, and the audience is asked not to express any support or opposition during the forum, and to hold your applause at the end. I would like to remind everybody, please turn off your cellphones and pagers if you haven't done so. Photography and videotaping is not authorized by the League of Women Voters. This forum may not be taped or edited and must be broadcast in its entirety and in accordance to all FCC regulations. The candidates may not use this forum broadcast as part of their ads or literature. We will accept questions from the audience for the first 30 minutes of the forum. Please write down your questions on the index cards which are provided, and one of the League members will go around and pick those up and give them to the screening committee. Questions which are hostile, embarrassing, inappropriate, or of personal nature will not be asked. Questions on similar topics will be grouped together and submitted to the moderator to ask. The League of Women Voters will screen those questions, and within the constraints of the timeframe, attempts to make all topics of interest expressed available for the audience to ask. The candidates do not have knowledge of the questions in advance. All questions do become the property of the League of Women Voters. We will not be having any opening statements, and candidates will each have one minute to answer the questions. At the conclusion of the forum, each candidate will have an opportunity to make a two-minute closing statement. Candidates are required to strictly observe the time limits. When candidates have 15 seconds left in their response time, a warning card will be displayed, and that will signal that your time is about to expire. Please wrap up your sentence as best as you can, and as soon as you can after that comes up. And I hate being stickler on the time, so please do your best. Now, I would like to introduce our candidates. And these aren't in order, but they are in order of how they drew the straws, so bear with me. Julie Pitchard. Let's see, Jeff Quinell. Fritz. Say it one more time.
Bogot.
Bogot, thank you. I have one of those names that's extremely hard to pronounce. I hate having brutalizing their names up there. And Margaret Colangelo.
Colangelo.
Colangelo, thank you. And guess what? They allow me to talk in first names with them, so we won't have to fight with that again. All right. And like I said, the candidates did draw straws, and so the first question is going to go to Julie. And I'm going to start the forum right now, if you are ready. Again, your timekeepers are right there. What draws you to service on the school board, and what skills and experiences do you bring to the job? Julie?
Okay, thank you. Well, what draws me to the school board was really when I started volunteering in the classrooms when my kids were young, and I was able to see firsthand the challenges facing our teachers and our administrators. And then in 2003, when Northfield was experiencing budget cuts, I started paying attention to how schools are funded and some of the challenges of lack of resources in our schools. And so with that knowledge, and when three years later, our district had to have a levy referenda campaign, I stepped up to co-chair that levy referenda campaign with Ann Maple. And there, I really was able to learn firsthand the value that our community places in education. And it was a real natural progression for me then to come to the school board. I think my greatest strengths is that I'm an incumbent candidate, and my depth of experience and current knowledge of school issues will be a benefit to this community.
Thank you. Jeff, you have one minute, please.
Jeff Quinell, thanks, everyone, for coming. Basically, I'm a graduate of Northfield High School, the only one on the candidate or the only person to be on the board. That is a graduate of Northfield. So, I mean, I just feel a great connection, obviously, to the school district. Love education and want our kids to do the best they can, have them be prepared to pursue whatever career that they'd like to do. Was on the school board from 2008 to 2012, so just excited to try to get back on the board and make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Fritz, one minute, please.
So, like Julie, my first exposure in the schools was volunteering in my kids' classrooms. And my wife, Rachel Matney, and I, in 2011, noticed that there was a, even in Northfield, is a big gap in achievement between lower-income students and students from wealthier backgrounds. And that was a time when the state had borrowed a lot of money from the school districts and was issuing IOUs rather than paying directly. So, we didn't feel we could have, it would have been nice if we thought we could have a big impact on that, but as a kind of budget-neutral approach to having some impact on the big achievement gap in Northfield, we started an organization to bring in community volunteers to tutor in the schools, as well as help place college volunteers with teachers who needed help. And that effort accelerated Northfield, had something like 18,000 volunteer hours in the year last year. And starting last year, I've been on the DPAK Committee for the school board, so I'm attending some of the meetings, and I'm interested in participating even more.
Thank you. Margaret?
Hello, my name is Margaret Colangelo, and I have a strong sense of public service. So, I always knew I would probably run. And when I learned that the open school board seats were uncontested in Northfield, I thought, this is not, this is not good in Northfield. We need people who will, our voters need choices, basically. My background is in human services. I've also worked in the school arranging tutors and mentors and volunteers. My job was one of the jobs that was lost in the last round of budget cuts, so I know how important placing those tutors and mentors was, and then it was gone. I also worked with Julie when we were advocating for a 5% increase in the state's funding of public education. And so we got a really deep education then of what it is, what it takes to run a school system.
Thank you. The next question, we will start with Jeff. And the question is, what is the principal role of the school board?
Principal role of the school board is to be the governing body of the school district in terms of policy, curriculum, and kind of setting a vision for, you know, what we want to have done with our school district. About 75% of the funding comes from the state and about 25 from local taxes, but it's the, it's basically, there's a board of seven, it's like the board of directors, and then we have our superintendent, and he's our, or she, whoever would be in the school board is, our school system is to take care of the school district. So, that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Fritz?
Well, we're in the lucky position that at the moment, that the current role of the school board is to keep everything running as well as it has been for the last years. And the secondary role is that because things are going relatively smoothly as such things go, is that there's room for innovation and leadership in that area.
Thank you. Margaret?
I look at the role of the school board as a group to objectively disseminate information. There's a lot of tough decisions to be made, and a lot of information coming at us, and we need to be there to help. Well, like in our larger government, a system of checks and balances in making those decisions.
Thank you. Julie?
Well, I think, in my view, the principal role of the school board is really to focus on the big picture. I think it's critical that we establish goals, and that we're aligning resources with these goals, and making policy with the ultimate goal of increasing student achievement. I think it's a responsibility for us to be at the schools and supporting the amazing things that are happening in our schools. I think we need to be out there interacting with the community, gaining their perspective on things that we're doing in the district, as well as further educating them on some of the programs being done in the district. I think we always need to be out there listening to the community, and I think additionally, we need to be very active in educating for K-12 education with our state and national legislators. I think that as local school board members, we need to be able to help them understand the impact of some of their funding decisions on individual school districts.
Thank you. And just a reminder, if you ever need a question repeated, please feel free to ask. The next question, Fritz, we'll start with you. Recent studies have indicated there are educational benefits to starting the school day later for high school students. Would you favor moving to a later start date at the high school?
Yes, I'm strongly in favor of that, and really, the only obstacle is working out the numerous practical details, both for staff and for families.
Thank you, Margaret.
I also strongly agree. Studies have shown that once high schools go to a later start date, things just improve. Everything that should improve does. Some challenges are taken care of, and after raising three teenagers through the high school myself, I can see definitely a strong advantage. And like Fritz said, there'd just be some semantics to work out.
Thank you. Julie?
Well, this is a really interesting topic, and it's had renewed energy behind it as a result of a University of Minnesota 2014 study. And the research is absolutely compelling as to why, you know, secondary students, the benefits of them starting later. The biggest challenge for Northfield, back in 2003, '04, in the budget cuts, we went to a single-tier busing system, which means we only go to the country once. So, in order for this to work, we would have to back everyone up. We would have to have an 8:30 start for our high school students, but then it would be a 9:10 start for our elementary students, meaning they wouldn't get out till 4 o'clock. That presents a number of challenges for our elementary school parents. I think it's a conversation we need to have, but I think it's much more challenging in our district because of the single-tier busing system. There's only about 14% of the high schools in the nation currently doing this. Again, the evidence is compelling. I'm not sure how we can potentially implement that in Northfield, but I would be supportive of reviewing the possibility of doing so.
Thank you. And now Jeff, one minute, please.
I think one of the things we do a good job at the school board, at least we did the last 2008, '12, is just framing a question and giving, you know, parents and students and administrators, the community, a good chance of looking at it. So, I think if we just frame the question up and have a couple of options that they can decide on, I mean, I could, you know, go either way on that, but I think if there's a lot of good research, you know, the status quo seems to work a lot of times, but, you know, change and effectiveness as far as education is also a good thing to look at. So, I'd just like to talk it out and give people a choice.
Thank you. Margaret, we'll start with you, and this is kind of falls back to the previous question a little bit. In addition to that possible change, do you think the issue of an August start date to the school year should be revisited? Why or why not?
Well, I think Minnesota is unique in that I believe, I'm a strong advocate for starting after Labor Day, because I think in Minnesota, our tourism industry is really important statewide, and that tourism dollars, stay strong if people can still take vacations till the end of September. I'm open to new ideas, though. Truly, I do not come into this with an agenda. I'm an advocate of starting after Labor Day, but I'm open to the possibility of other start dates.
Thank you. Julie?
Okay, thank you. The school district actually explored the merits of an alternative calendar, and as a school board member, I was supportive of that, just because of the research shown how it's increasing the possibilities and the research that showed it has potential for increasing student achievement. As in an overall goal of our school district and our strategy of always looking for ways to increase student achievement, I think it was important that we looked at it. I think that we had a very good process with our community to try to explore the potential of that. It was clear that our community at this point was not ready to make that transition for our school district. I think, however, as a school board and as a district, we need to continue to look for ways that we can continue to increase student achievement, and the merits of an alternative calendar or a late start at the high school are all those that should continually be reviewed as opportunities.
Thank you. Excuse me. Jeff?
Yeah, I was on the board when we talked about that the last time. I think nobody really wants to be in school in June too much, and I think the lobby for the resorts and things up north, they really need those kids to, you know, to work as long as they can for a later start. Starting school the same time as the state colleges, that's a decent idea, and just, you know, anytime, the Labor Day start has been tradition, but, I mean, even a week or two earlier than that isn't necessarily a bad idea. It's kind of the consensus in a sense that I got out of that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Fritz?
One of the things that motivates me a lot is the issue of summer slide, which I see affect my own kids to some extent, but which disproportionately affects lower-income kids. And so I am always open to the idea of changing the calendar or taking other measures to impact the summer slide, so I think that we should be open to the idea of changing the calendar while also realizing that that has drastic impacts on every family's plans and rituals and routines every year. And so if we move in that direction, and I feel that we probably should for the sake of achievement, that it needs to be a long and carefully staged process.
Thank you. Just a reminder to our audience, if you do have questions, please fill out an index card and turn those in to one of the League members. The next question, we'll start with Julie. What ideas do you have to limit bullying of students?
I think bullying of students has, again, become sort of an issue both nationally and statewide, and, you know, time and time again, you read stories about students who've been bullying, who've been bullied, and I think our state legislators took a strong stand on that. We, as a district, had already taken a very strong stand on that. We had created a policy that was based off of a research study done in Europe that really was a comprehensive look at bullying and all aspects, and a really fair and equitable approach to identifying bullying and allowing administrators to address it. I think as a board and as a district, we need to continue with the number of initiatives we have. We have kindness retreat. We have orientation programs at the sixth grade level, at the ninth grade level, and I think that every single site improvement plan that our individual schools come to present to the school board, there's always a school climate goal in that, and I think we just have to continue to identify new and innovative ways to continue to ensure that our students are not being bullied.
Thank you. Jeff, one minute, please.
I just want to make sure that students and parents have a process that they're comfortable with, that they can follow up within the school district. In fact, I just talked to a parent that had a daughter that was being bullied this last week, and I just said, well, I want to make sure that, you know, I laid down a process to talk to the teachers and then go to the principal, and then if they had any other problems, get back to a school board member and even talk to Dr. Richardson. So, it was kind of like a lot of those points, just kind of talking it through and seeing what's happening and make sure that their line of communications and their protocol was taken care of, so they're getting their point across, and everybody can sit down and have a good chat and, you know, zero tolerance, it's not acceptable. Every student, you know, deserves to be treated fairly, so.
Thank you. Fritz?
I feel comfortable that Northfield has already made a bunch of very good steps in the area of bullying prevention, and it seems like I'm more interested in improving school climate and the tightness of community as a way of going forward, rather than having rigid rules that special cases sometimes fall through. But I'm delighted with the policies that are in place.
Margaret?
I do. I think the school has made some dramatic steps. The kindness retreats, the respect retreats, the reparations program at the middle school, where the students need to make amends and make it right. I think what the challenge is for the school, though, is the anonymity of the internet that we have now makes bullying sometimes fly under the radar and hard for professionals and adults to see. And I would just strongly support continuing all of these programs and new initiatives to protect all our students and to build a sense of community as well that prohibits the bullying in the first place.
Thank you. This next question is quite long, so bear with me, and we'll start with Jeff. In the past 10 years, enrollments have declined at Glenville Park Elementary School, while they have increased nearly to capacity at Sibling Elementary. This has resulted in a disappropriate number of low-income students at Glenville Park. Do you believe the school board should do something to achieve social-economic balance at the three elementary schools? If so, what solutions do you propose?
I believe you mean Greenville Park. And I actually opened up that school, so that, I was a fourth grader when that school opened, so, anyway, dating myself. Neighborhood schools are well-liked, I think. Again, can you repeat a little bit of the question? I'm sorry.
So, it's Greenville, sorry.
Right.
In the past 10 years, enrollments have declined at Greenville Elementary School, while they have increased to capacity at Sibling. This has resulted in a disappropriate number of low-income students at Greenville Park.
Right.
Do you believe the school board should do something to address the social-economic balance at the elementary schools, and what solutions do you propose?
Well, my general thought is if you want to go to a school, elementary school, live in that area, I mean, everybody would want to, they think they want to pick whatever school it is, and it's just based on the demographics of wherever your elementary school is. So, I think we have three elementary schools, and I don't think we should, you know, people should, if they want to go to that school, they need to live in that area. So, as far as the diversity of the populations, I mean, we just need to treat everybody the same and, you know, do the best we can with the student population in that area, period.
Thank you. Fritz?
The question is a really good one, and I would be concerned about taking active steps to increase diversity, except that, at the present moment, Greenville is doing such a good job of, both with school climate and of moving toward a community school, that I wouldn't want to get in the way of those steps by changing anything at this point. Also, I feel strongly enough about elementary schools and their ties to their geographical communities and their neighborhoods, that I'd want to think very hard before breaking that up. So, it seems like a bunch of good things are already happening in Greenville, and so my, in theory, I might want to worry about that, but in practice, such wonderful things are happening there that I wouldn't want to disrupt that at the moment.
Margaret?
I agree with Fritz on that matter, and also, this is such a large issue, and there's so much information there, that I really would feel uncomfortable right now saying exactly what I would do without a great deal more information. I also agree with the community schools. I think having kids go to school nearby home is really important, and for parents to have their students near home. Again, I would need a lot more information to start saying I had a recommendation for this issue, because I think having a school with low-income students in it does not necessarily mean it's a problem. I think it means there's some unique challenges within that building, and the professionals there are certainly rising to those challenges.
Thank you. Julie?
Yes, well, I do acknowledge, and you had stated the fact, that there is some enrollment differences between the three elementary buildings. In my view, it's not enough to consider changing our current strategy of Northfield schools, and I'm really glad that Fritz brought up the community school at Greenville, because I think it's one of the most exciting things that's happened in our district. We were awarded $500,000 over the next five years from the Minnesota Department of Education, as well as a $10,000 grant from Wings, and then to create the community school at Greenville. And it's really addressing the non-academic barriers to those kids being successful. And the current school, the current demographic of our Greenville school stands to benefit most from the community school, so like Fritz, I would absolutely not want to advocate making a change at this point.
Thank you. We'll start with Fritz on this question. Please tell us as to whether you believe the best way to stop a bad guy with a gun in a school is with a good guy with a gun also in the school. If not, what is the best way?
I'm sorry, you're first.
Well, what I certainly want to believe is that statistically speaking, the chances of a bad guy with a gun are outweighed by the chances of some accident with, around the good guy with the gun. That I just, I just have to hope that by my beliefs about human nature. So, I guess I'm strongly opposed to the good guy with the gun theory. On the other hand, I've been attending facilities, meetings at the various schools, and it's on parents' minds to improve the physical security of the buildings, and I'm, pretty much each parent who's spoken to this has said simultaneously, "I love how open and welcoming my school is, and I'm concerned by how open and welcoming my school is." And so I'm torn up about what the right answer is in terms of making sure that the schools can be locked down, but making sure that they're welcoming. It's a difficult question.
Thank you. Margaret?
I find the idea of anybody with a gun inside our schools absolutely horrifying. I think the specter of the bad guy with the gun is about that big, and the horrific chances of there being an accident with that gun are about this big. And why would we invite a monster into our schools to protect us against a whisper? I would rather see other measures taken to protect the integrity of our buildings and to address violence in our community as a whole, not just at our schools. So, no, good guy with a gun, no. No, absolutely not.
Julie?
Yes, well, I think what this really talks about is the broader issue of school safety and the safety of our kids in school, and I think that as a district, we have tried to address the safety issues as best we can. We were able to make some improvements. Unfortunately, as a result of Sandy Hook, it became much more of a top priority. We had already had very detailed safety plan, safety upgrades in place, but we were able to activate and make some of those happen. The high school is probably the biggest concern in our district right now, but we do have a plan in place. I think that when things like yesterday in Washington and even Waseca, where we see some of the root cause of some of school violence is really mental health issues, I know that Marnie Thompson at our high school is working with our elementary schools to try to work towards helping to identify and get treatment to these kids who are early, very early on identified as having mental health issues, and often are the ones who end up causing school violence.
Thank you. Jeff?
Well, student safety is number one. I'm always on that topic, and I was just over at the high school. And I was just over at the high school last week, just watching people come in the front door. And I went to school there for three years, and I know that school's had a few different additions, but that whole front area needs to be revamped. And it's a pretty simple plan, the way that I could see it, to come in on one door. But anyway, all of that stuff needs to be a flat-out priority. And I'm for, you know, we lock down now during the school day, and boom, you can do the radio thing, and like that, you're in lockdown. So, I mean, that's just kind of unfortunately the world we live in now, but I think we want to be welcoming and safe at the same time. As far as guns, I think that, you know, if there's a police officer around, or if we have a situation where we have a community officer or something like that that's armed, you know, I'm okay with that. So, but it's always something to consider. Bad guy with a gun, just make it really unattractive for, that they don't even want to even try anything, so, thank you.
Thank you. Margaret, the next question, we'll start with you. "The current three-year lease for student iPads expires during the term of the candidates elected in November. What is your assessment of the current program? How serious of a problem is it for children without access to the internet at homes?"
Well, I saw, when I was working at the middle school with children who were in need of mentors and tutors, I saw a lot of the barriers to achievement was the lack of technology at home. And sometimes things would happen, assignments, and I think, well, what about these kids at home who have, one, no access, and two, just no hardware? They don't own a computer. They've got to somehow get themselves to the library, and they may not own a car. So I think the iPad initiative has been wonderful. I think there's always room for improvement, but I think it gives our educators new and creative ways. My daughter herself uses the reverse classroom, where she watches the lecture on her iPad, and then class time is all about individual work and homework. So I think it really just opens doors, and I think it's been a great initiative.
Thank you. Julie?
Would you mind repeating the question?
Certainly. "The current three-year lease for student iPads expires during the term of candidates elected in November. What is your assessment of the current program? And how serious of a problem is it for children without access to internet in their homes?"
Okay, thank you. Well, it was really exciting for me as a board member when our district implemented the transformational technology initiative. I absolutely think it's a game changer for all of our students, and I think it's really transforming the educational experience for all of our students. It absolutely was an issue and something that we discussed at length and did a lot of research on internet access for our students. We have found, with a lot of great community support, that many of our students have found opportunities and ways to get internet access at a low cost. So we have found that close to 90% of our students are receiving on a very readily-available basis internet access. Kids can download information before they leave the building, and often that's all they need. They don't need that internet access at home. What the surprising challenge, well, we knew it was a challenge, but the continuing challenge has really been internet access for those living outside the city of Northfield, so the country residents.
Thank you. Jeff?
Well, first of all, I'm a former regional manager for a wireless company, so something I can talk intelligently about. As far as the remote access, I mean, we should be able to have state rates or something like that where the farm kid or whatever can just, you know, get on the internet and just have a flat rate and out of the carriers, just to have something that's real reasonable for them to get access to do their homework. That's, I mean, number one. As far as the world we live in is technology, a smart board and a tablet makes a lot of sense. I mean, that's just kind of where we are and where we're going. As far as the cost, I remember, I think the whole ticket for all of those iPads was like, one FTE was a cost of, you know, one teacher. So it's not, I mean, if we're spending $10,000, which is basically what we have invested in our kids going to this, to school, our teachers, you know, a $300 iPad's not, you know, that big a deal. And as far as the lease, the three-year lease, the way to structure that, I'd like to look at that again and see what it is for the next time, because next time it might be Android or it might be, you know, Apple. So there's always options, but three years is a decent period, so.
Thank you. Fritz?
I've been very excited about the iPad program, partly because I, even at my age, I unusually for the time had early access to a computer, which led, shockingly, directly to my career as a software engineer. And so being able to see, it's true, skipped, a lot of my college education was skipped over in favor of all the programming that I did when I was 12. And so making sure that every kid has those same opportunities that I had seems like a wonderful thing. And it does seem like the kids who don't have easy internet access is kind of the next frontier in making sure that it's, there's equitable distribution for every kid.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Julie. "What are your thoughts about the potentially long-term injuries caused in sports, especially football?"
It's very interesting, the whole topic of injuries and primarily concussions, and I think there's just so much more awareness of it. I think it's extremely important. I know that as a school district, our activities director, Tom Groutmann, takes this issue very, very seriously. All of our coaches are trained, they all are able to recognize and take very seriously any injuries that occur in the playing field or wherever, and making sure that our student athletes are safe. I think it's really interesting, I was just having a conversation with the football coach at St. Olaf, who said that unfortunately, he thinks the football is the lightning rod right now for concussion, and he doesn't know that that's totally fair. But anyway, I think that as a district, we have to take measures to ensure that our student athletes are always safe.
Thank you. Jeff?
Well, as a former captain and all-conference football player at Northfield, and I played middle linebacker at Augsburg, I've been hitting the head plenty of times. As far as concussions, we have to take that very seriously. And I think that it's been kind of screwed under the table for a long time, and I just think that there's actually technology out there that now that you can implant a device in the helmet, and says if the kid gets hit too hard, that they should kind of, you know, pull them off the field and talk to them. So better technology with helmets and just a lot more awareness and a lot more testing of, you know, what their cognitive abilities are when you're pulling them off the field, and great follow-up after the game. So that's number one, student safety and student health.
Thank you. Fritz?
Yes, I think that we're already doing a fairly good job of tracking those issues and taking them seriously, and we'll just need to follow the science and continue to take steps as necessary.
Margaret?
Yeah, it's definitely something we should never let up on. My dau, I have daughters, and I've seen some initiatives where we suddenly went, oh, gosh, girls' bodies are different than boys' bodies, and maybe they need to be warmed up in a different way to avoid injuries that are unique to girls. I mean, how many girls we hear of who are having these ACL tears from soccer? So I think just, we are so lucky to have University of Minnesota programs, and our school has really utilized those, the concussion baseline, where we get a baseline study on kids so that we know if there's been cognitive impairment, if they have had a head injury. That is something we should just never let up on. That should always be number one, because after all, they're just children and their bodies are still growing, and it's very important that we protect them as adults. That's our job.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Jeff. "How does pre-K education fit in your agenda at the Northfield School District?"
Well, I was the liaison for community education my last, you know, term, so being involved and getting, you know, kids involved in education as soon as possible, and early childhood development, I have a minor in psychology, but as you know, that's why they call it success by six, because a lot of the personality, a lot of learning abilities and things like that are, you know, formatted before age six. So the more, the better, and just be welcoming with whatever we can do and get a kid off to a great start. I don't believe state laws that they really don't have to start school until age seven, so, thank you.
Thank you. Fritz?
Well, for sure, both parental education for parents of new infants and pre-K are the biggest drivers of improvements in the achievement gap. And so I feel very strongly that moving in the direction of universal pre-K is a top priority, which will be a lot of work to achieve, but definitely worth doing that work.
Thank you. Margaret?
I also see pre, strong pre-K programs as important in closing that achievement gap, and just giving all kids the best possible opportunity for success when they do hit reading, math, et cetera. I'm also a huge advocate for play as the best method of learning for these pre-K students, and I think we can incorporate that sense of childhood and play within those programs. And I think Northfield does a great job of that.
And Julie?
Could you please repeat the question?
Sure. "How does pre-K education fit into your agenda for the Northfield School District?"
Okay, thank you. Actually, I think that our district does an amazing job of offering a variety of really very, very good early childhood education programs. I think that as a nation and as a state, the conversation is now E-12 education, really instead of K-12, we're really recognizing the importance of that early education. Studies show that 50% of students show up in kindergarten without the skills necessary to be successful. I think our state legislators recognized that when they offered vouchers and scholarship opportunities for parents. I think the critical need is getting those students who aren't, may be able to afford early education. And I think our Community Services Division is doing a really good job of recognizing those students and assuring that they have access to programs. I think we can always do better, but I absolutely think it's a key to lowering the achievement gap.
Thank you. Fritz, we'll start with you. "How would you determine financially the cutting and addition of subjects and programs in the school?"
Well, mostly I'm thankful not to be facing that choice in the immediate term. One of the areas for innovation that I, the current board and administration and principals are all on board with, at least based on a brainstorming session that I attended over the summer, is moving in the direction of more collaborative and project-based learning, in which case, subjects, to some degree, smear together and become less relevant, and student interest and student-led projects become more foregrounded. And so thinking in terms of subjects moving forward or subjects moving backward may decrease in importance as we go along anyway. In terms of the budget cutting, it's just always heart-wrenching, and I don't have a smarter idea other than to proceed very slowly and try to spread the pain as thinly as possible.
Thank you.
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. "How would you determine financially the cutting and addition of subjects and programs in the schools?"
Well, first, let me back up and say that I think that schools having to cut budgets is very sad, because I think our state government has done a woeful job of funding our schools. We somehow can find the money to fund a Viking Stadium, but we can't find the money to give to our public schools. And to me, that is short-sighted. So, but unfortunately, schools do get faced with this, because in right here and now, this is the budget, this is what we have to make. I would very carefully, like Fritz, take a very slow approach to cutting anything. I would hope that we could be, instead of the word cutting, we could be creative and have the same outcomes, the same opportunities, but maybe delivered in a slightly different way.
Thank you. Julie?
Well, I think as a school board and as a district, it absolutely is the most difficult thing we have to do. I think Margaret also raises the point about the lack of resources that our state has given our schools. Over the last decade, if K-12 education funding would have just kept pace for inflation, we would have $2,000 more per student. In an elementary classroom, that is $50,000, and that's just kept pace with inflation. I think our district does an amazing job of being good stewards of the community's money. I think that when it comes to facing tough decisions, we have to do it together as a community. It has to be a transparent process, and it has to be one where all stakeholders weigh in. It absolutely is the most difficult thing we do, and, you know, the future doesn't necessarily say with the uncertainty of state funding that Northfield as a school district wouldn't face that in the immediate future.
Thank you. Jeff?
Well, whatever the budget is, whatever number we have to work with, I just think that, and being on the board when we had to do some cuts, I think Dr. Richardson had a very fair process. I'm sorry, actually, I lost Margaret. That's, I mean, I actually remember you back then and talking about, so that's terrible. So I'm sorry for that. But I just think that going in and the way that we, with a lot of public discussion and committee, going in and looking at each department and saying, if we took this percent away, what would you do? If we took this percent away, what would you do? And I think that's just, it's a good process. The process, I think, you know, worked well, and obviously, some people have different outcomes that they like, and obviously, you don't like yours. And I, too bad to say that, too, I don't know why I wouldn't have another job for you there. So that I would have been all over that. Anyway, so that's, the process, whatever numbers we have to work with, come from the state, and, you know, we go from there. So thank you.
Thank you. Margaret, we'll start with you. "The school district is in the process of creating a facilities master plan. As you look ahead to the next 10 or 20 years, what would your priorities be to maintaining, renovating, or expanding the district's educational facilities?"
Well, if we're talking facilities purely, I truly think that what happens inside the classroom is more important from a fiscally responsible point than what's happening out. I don't think any of us really cares what it looks like, as long as we're getting good outcomes. But again, it has to be safe. We can't let our taxpayer investment of our structures just fall apart because they're being rained on. But I think the facilities going forward, we must continue to look at them for safety reasons, school safety, for classroom size. But again, classroom size really isn't the physical size of the classroom, it's how many students we're putting in there with an education professional. I think that has a greater impact on them than physically, what does the room look like, or how wide are the hallways? But some of the buildings need some work, absolutely.
Thank you. Julie?
Yes, it's been an issue that has been the forefront currently of conversation at the district. And I think one of the challenges we face is balancing deferred maintenance against what improvements we need to make or want to make to our building. Currently, we have $17 million in deferred maintenance, $10 million of which will come in the next three years. So from a resource standpoint, and having good stewardship of our buildings, we have to maintain our buildings. We're very fortunate in this community that in 2006 and again in 2011, our community approved the Capital Projects Levy, which has allowed us to keep our buildings in good shape. I think right now, the conversation has to be, how do we adequately meet the needs of 21st century learning, and how do we do that in our buildings? We have so many programs that have kids being pulled out to get really good education and really good focus on them individually and their needs, and we're doing it in hallways. And so we need to really look at how our schools can adequately address 21st century learning.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Yeah, we all were invited to a facilities meeting. They had about 40 people there, and they talked about that. But I think that the main thing is safety and security, and then a maintenance schedule is to honor, you know, what you've got. And I think, I'd like to see a little bit of vision of what we can do for the future with maybe, how do we make our sports teams and facilities better? And how do we also, if we had any other facilities with that, how do we use that in, you know, our curriculum? So that's something to look at, and I'm also opening up for, you know, private donations. If there's some alumni or somebody that wants to write a check or help with that, or an alumni association we could put together, or a booster group, you know, that's a great alternative for raising money for future facilities.
Thank you. Fritz?
Yeah. The sad thing about facilities is that under current budget realities, it's actually fairly hard to even imagine broadly, that the, my maximum imagination often extends to things like, well, maybe we could do all the maintenance. Oh, that's a fantasy. So I guess my priorities in order would be something like maintenance, security, full ADA compliance, equity among the elementary schools, because some are hurting relative to the others. And then, the wild fantasy of having educational adequacy, enough spaces for all of the additional programs and pullouts that we're doing, and having those not happen in hallways. And that already is so beyond current budgetary realities, that imagining how we would prepare for the next 50 years actually is a little bewildering. I have ideas about that, but that falls low in the priority list, unfortunately, and it breaks my heart.
Thank you. And now I'm going to ask one more forum question to allow each of you two minutes for your closing statements. And so that's the last question we'll start with. Julie? "The Northfield Public Schools authorized two charter schools, Prairie Creek and Arcadia." Am I saying that right?
Yes.
Would you favor continuing these relationships? Why or why not? And what is the benefit to families and the benefit to the district?
Okay, thank you. I think that it's a wonderful, unique aspect of our school district and educating kids in Northfield that we have charter schools. I think it's awesome and amazing. I think it's awesome and amazing that we're able to offer choice to our students and to our parents and families. We, as a Northfield School District, are authorizers for both Arcadia and Prairie Creek. What has become increasingly difficult for authorizers is the oversight that is necessary. We're actually in a process of learning what reauthorization will look like. I know the last time we authorized Prairie Creek and Arcadia, it was over 400-page documents that had to be submitted in order to be an authorizer. So, but as a district, we recognize choice. I think we learn from charter schools in terms of what they're doing. I think particularly as we go into 21st century learning and the more focus on project-based learning, that they can be a model for us to learn from. I do support charter schools in our district, and I do support choice.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, the choices for the charter schools, glad to have Arcadia and Prairie Creek. There was a period there where we applied, they kind of took that away, and we got turned down our first time for, you know, for sponsoring the school. So I, you know, parents and students need to have choices, and it's not a one-size-fits-all. So charter schools are a good option, and we just, we're glad that we can have that here. So there's a lot of school districts that aren't in the position to, you know, sponsor charter schools. So I think that having choices and different learning alternatives is a great way to go. So, thank you.
Thank you. Fritz?
Yeah, as many of you know, I actually have a personal stake in this, because I have a daughter at Arcadia. So it seems like the strength of charter schools is in the area of choice for students, in my case, matter to the student, my daughter decided, not I, and as laboratories to feed back into the public schools. So to the extent that it's slowly becoming a priority for the school district at large to move in the direction of collaborative, collaborative, project-based education, Prairie Creek and Arcadia can be a really useful laboratory, and that tightening that relationship would be important. I am very concerned with the financial and distraction burden of how onerous the authorization process is becoming. So that seems like a significant downside that will need work.
Thank you. Margaret?
I also am a huge advocate for choice. Not all children learn the same. We have to have avenues for these kids to reach their full potential. And for some, it's Arcadia. For some, it's another charter model. I did a lot of substitute teaching as a short-call sub for several years, and I did some subbing what was then art tech. And I was really amazed at how well the project-based learning worked for some of these kids. And I thought, well, I am so glad they have these choices. And I think we, as taxpayers, it's an investment in these charter schools is to help these kids reach their full potential through all kinds of different methods of learning and growing and getting ready for their future, basically.
Thank you. We are nearing the end of our forum and want to give each of the candidates a two-minute closing statement time. And we're going to begin in the next order, which happens to be Jeff's, so you have two minutes.
Well, thanks, everybody, for coming, and the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this event. I call myself a turnkey candidate, because I was on the board from 2008 to '12 and off the board, and now I'm running in for a second opportunity. Just really have a passion for Northfield and longtime learning, and I want to get back on the board and make a difference and just give the best opportunity for our kids to get educated and get a great start and also be great alumni for the school district. I think that there's a lot of different choices out there. We need to really focus more on trying to talk about vocations and really having more of a vision when they graduate of what is it you want to do. I mean, not a four-year degrees for everybody. There should be things in the trades. And I just think that because Northfield is an education town, I mean, we take a lot of pride in that here, and we expect the best out of our kids and expect to be one of the best school districts of our size in the state. And I'm just passionate about keeping it that way and also being conscious about what the costs are and getting the taxpayer the best bang for their buck. So, thanks again, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Fritz, you have two minutes.
So the thing that excites me the most about the current moment in terms of education policy in Northfield has to do with the emphasis that started a few years ago with Northfield Promise, and then by happy coincidence, is now written into law in the World's Best Workforce Plan, is the emphasis on birth-to-career education rather than just K-12. And since I care a lot about the achievement gap, the focus, especially on the very earliest years, is a wonderful thing, and that Northfield has such a great resource in Northfield Promise and is making, is winding up being a leader in that area. And so this is a particularly exciting time for me with my priorities to look at being on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters, and a thank you to Northfield. I think it's very exciting, the educated populace we have here and how our voters are truly committed to choosing the right candidate. I see an educated population as the strongest gift that we can send into the future. And I believe that public education is one of the wisest and most crucial investments that we can make as taxpayers and as a society. As a school board member, I would work hard to ensure that this investment is protected and that each and every student has equal and ample opportunity to prepare for their future.
Thank you. Julie?
Okay, thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event and for your efforts in helping our community to make informed decisions in the upcoming elections. I mean, school board elections are really vitally important to our schools, but also to our community. And I've appreciated the opportunity to share my views on the complex issues facing K-12 public education in today's times. I'd like to thank the audience for being here today and for being engaged in the issues that face our school district. Lastly, I would like to thank my husband, Mark, and my daughter, Caroline, who are in the audience, for their support. As a community, Northfield has high expectations for its schools. My responsibility as a board member is to ensure that every student has the opportunity to be successful. I'm seeking another four-year term on the Northfield School Board, because I'm passionate about making Northfield schools the best they can be. As the only incumbent candidate, I believe that my knowledge will benefit, my depth of experience and my knowledge of current school issues will benefit Northfield. Northfield schools are a great source of pride and inspiration for our community, and I ask for your support so that together, we can continue to work hard to ensure Northfield's tradition of educational excellence. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank all of you for a very friendly and informative forum. Always appreciate that. Thank you to our timekeepers here today and all of you that are in the audience and all of you who may be watching at home. We are going to take a short break before we start the Rice County Attorney's Candidate Forum, which is at 10:30. We hope many of you are able to stay and continue to watch online. Thank you, and have a great day.